Fifteen bucks.
Yeah, it cost me fifteen bucks, dude.
Call the meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Mary Beth.
Nelson. Larson. Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reet.
Here.
Bulk.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Okay, item three, we have an update by Shannon Landauer, who is the president of the Iowa Lakes Corridor Development Corporation. And Shannon's going to speak with us tonight about the developments that the corridor's had, especially with regard to Clay County, since we were last blessed with her presence.
Yeah, thank you. I know Joanne Fallen had come out and talked a little bit about our existing industry work, but wanted to go a little more comprehensive with our updates. So again, I'm going to try to cover things pretty broadly, but also give the time for some questions. And I certainly welcome any additional follow-up afterwards, too. Always happy to sit down with anyone and go over things further. So I'll start with our business retention and expansion work. To date, we have completed fifty-five visits, twenty-two of those are with Clay County companies. Really excited to report that in aggregate with those visits, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty million dollars in investment at eighteen of those companies, looking at about a hundred and eighty-five new jobs. So those expansion plans really range from physical expansion and with building, just new positions added in growth of product line, et cetera, and certainly some equipment purchase and technology upgrades as well. We do continue to expand that visit list. As mentioned, of those eighteen expansion projects, six of those are Clay County companies that we're working with. That list has expanded to include beyond just the primary industries. We're really working with services that are looking to grow. We also are meeting with our lenders. They have a really good pulse on the economy, ag and industry. So we want to continue to have some of that feedback as we are working through all of those existing industry projects. Another area that we have a lot going on is entrepreneurship area, small business. In Clay County, right now, we have thirty-three open projects that ranges from startup in retail to expansion projects. We are working on some financial packaging. And also, we do have several business transition projects that are underway. We have had some expansion inquiries also of companies that are not on that list of existing industries that we do our survey process with. A couple of those that we're working with, again, are SEDC. We're partnering with SMU and of course, city to work through some incentive work as well. On the business attraction side, we did attend the Community Venture Network in both April and August. When we're up there, we get ten to twelve companies that are talking about their growth plans. Typically, they've started in that Minneapolis-St. Paul metro, and they're looking to expand into growth, sometimes just completely relocate. Sometimes it's new technologies from softwares to even medical device. Also, just expansions of cold storage and different kinds of companies like that. We did have six companies that we provided information on the Green Industrial Park to. Unfortunately, they really are all looking for existing structures. So we continue to just have those conversations. And again, we'll be visiting in December and hearing from companies, again, that are looking to expand. Also, as I mentioned, needing building versus green space. The Spirit Lake Shell Building is something that the corridor has been a part of for several years. We are closing on that building. It will be a manufacturing project. But we are in discussions with Corn Belt and Iowa Lakes Electric. They'd like to look at another spec building in the Spencer space. So just kind of starting those conversations, but again, also looking into some of the virtual spec work that could be done on the city-owned assets per conversation at SEDC. Transitioning a little bit into retail, we have had some pretty, pretty interesting information. When we do our data and our research, it's really important to understand the retail pulse in the community, to understand our market, and know what it is that those retailers are looking for. Primarily, we really focus on getting that gap data or those, those products that people are leaving the Spencer market to go find because they don't exist here. We really want to focus on closing those gaps and keeping that spend in this market. So it's really important to keep current data in front of us. Not only is it recruitment of new, but it offers expansion opportunities for existing retail. They can look at that gap and where products might lie that fit within their business. They also have the opportunity to see where people are commuting in for retail spend and where they could be focused on their marketing. So again, a lot of that comes from cellphone data. We're able to track down to specific location where people are shopping, where they're going after they shop here. And again, look at some of that data that we can give to those decision-makers. Housing is another area that I want to touch on. We have currently supported at the corridor five workforce housing tax credit applications. We're waiting for the state to make that announcement on who was awarded. One of those applications of the hundred and ninety-one units that are represented in those five projects, fifty-two of them would be in our Spencer market. This week is the Iowa Housing Conference. We're wondering if maybe that announcement will be made this week, but certainly when it is, we'll get that information out. We also worked with the SEDC team on looking at the next version of housing investment for Spencer. The Quality Housing Initiative is, has expended all of the funds. So it really is a matter of bringing together all of the partners that have funded the project, some of those developers, those lenders that have all been a part of that. So those conversations are ongoing in determining how best for the city to invest in housing. And also, we continue, we've had a couple multifamily housing developers that we've been in touch with that are investing in the region. They have requested information. So we have put together, Alec had helped to put some maps together to present on city-owned properties and what some of the potential programming could be. Finally, just some administrative and organizational notes from the corridor. Manufacturing Week is coming up in October, and so we do have tours planned in each of our counties. We will be inviting our elected officials and many others to join us on those tours, listen into those interviews, meet with the companies that are investing in the corridor region. And additionally, before the end of the year, we're looking to host a familiarization tour along with new leadership at our organization, Iowa Economic Development Authority, and some utility partners that really go out and promote the area outside of the state, just really haven't been in the corridor region very much to understand our assets, meet our community leaders. So we are trying to get that put together, again, hopefully by the end of the year. Today was another example of elected officials visiting our businesses. Today, we were at Northwest Bank with Representative Fiennesstra, talked a lot about banking and lending, also hit on some of those community issues that we're seeing with our businesses, as well as housing, workforce healthcare, all those types of things. We finally just want to say that we do have some other projects that are underway with our partners. CERIS is at Iowa State University. We're in conversation with them to bring out a food manufacturing event in twenty-three. We are also partnering with all of our talent development partners on an event for students to really highlight our local businesses, what career opportunities they have available, and all those types of things. Again, we're probably looking at fall of twenty-three by the time we're able to put all that together. So with that, I guess I'll open it up to any questions or any of those topics that you'd like to talk about further. I'd be happy to.
Anyone have any questions for Shannon at this time? Appreciate everything that you and the corridor are doing. One thing that, that I have a question with regard to is you were talking about the retention visits and the possible expansion of job opportunities and that sort of thing, and the possibility of a hundred and eighty-five new jobs. And one of the things that I keep hearing from employers is the lack of, of employees and the pool of employees. And can you address that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we, we kind of frame things comparing how important existing industry work is versus attraction. If we would say we have a hundred and eighty-five new jobs in one project, that would be really challenging. But again, the hundred and eighty-five are spread throughout the region. Again, another, another important point that we're talking about is really what it is taking for communities to grow with people. The housing conversation is part of it, childcare, et cetera. And again, working on some of those workforce training projects with the community college to upscale some of the current employees that we have and offer new opportunities. So we absolutely know it's a challenge. We don't want our computer, our employers in our communities to be competing in those wage arenas, but it really is a reality as well. And again, we, we know it's a challenge for the employers, but it's also betterment of the people in the community when they do have new opportunities to grow themselves, whether it be new skillsets or what have you. So along with the work we're doing with industry, we are very focused, too, on the employee recruitment marketing. We're partnering with Iowa Economic Development Authority on some of those things, really focused on millennials that are looking at that quality of place and trying to grow those in our labor shed area.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Shannon. Appreciate your report.
Of course, thanks for having me.
Yeah, we'll look forward to your next report, too. Thank you. Item four is the consent agenda. A is a motion to approve the city council minutes of August fifteen, two thousand and twenty-two. There are no licenses. C is a motion to approve a sewer refund of two hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents to Andy Pick, eleven oh two, Breezy Metal Lane. D is a resolution authorizing and directing the temporary closing of the alley south of Wheezy's Lounge and Grill, two sixteen Grand Avenue in the city of Spencer, as requested by Arnold Motor Supply for a welcome reception Wednesday, September seven, two thousand and twenty-two, from four thirty PM to eight PM. E is a resolution authorizing and directing the temporary closing of one twenty East Fifth Street between First Avenue East and Second Avenue East in the city of Spencer, as requested by Seasons Center for the Kids Carnival, Thursday, September twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, from four thirty PM to six thirty PM. F is a resolution authorizing and directing the temporary closing of portions of city streets in the city of Spencer, as requested by Spencer High School, for the Homecoming Parade, September twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-two, from one fifteen PM to two thirty PM. G is a motion to approve the sidewalk and assessment agreement with Christopher Berg at fourteen oh three, First Avenue East. H is a motion to approve a subordination agreement requested by Northwest Bank for a property included in the substandard housing program. I is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute subordination agreements for substandard housing rehab assessments. J is a resolution approving a contract with H&amp;S Roofing Company for the two thousand and twenty-two Spencer Library Roof Replacement Project for one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. And K is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfer for the month ending August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll make that motion. Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reet, aye. Bulk, aye. Orison.
Aye.
carries. Item five, we have one public hearing on the agenda tonight on the proposal to issue hospital revenue bonds or notes in one or more series in a principal amount not to exceed ten million dollars for the purpose of financing capital improvement projects for the benefit of Spencer Municipal Hospital. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have none, ma'am.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. Item one is a resolution determining to proceed with the issuance of hospital revenue bonds in one or more series in an aggregate, aggregate principal amount of not to exceed ten million dollars and approving the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust, one or more placement agreements, and other related documents.
So move.
Motion made by Lauren.
Second it.
Second by Ron. Any discussion?
Well, it looks like we have some hospital members here. Maybe they'd like to give us an update on what's going on and where these funds will be, or what project these funds will be going to.
Okay, we have Stacy and Brenda, and Brenda does not want to talk about the financing, as I understand it. Okay.
Brenda's here if you have questions on the project, though.
Yeah, so if you have questions about the project as well, we have a representative to talk about that. But Stacy's going to talk about the financing.
So we did borrow some funds last year to support some projects around the hospital, and this is specifically for the ED project this year of ten million dollars to support just a general, the cash flow situation that will happen when we spend twenty-two million dollars of our cash reserves on our ED expansion project. So that's, that's our, our goal.
So basically, this will just be a bridge for, for you, when you're doing this other project, right? Or you'll use these funds, but...
Yes, we'll use these funds for the project specifically.
For the project, so it's going to be a big project.
Yes, it's a big one.
When are we starting, or don't?
We are going to be doing some infrastructure in September, but we will do more of a groundbreaking in the spring.
All right, so looking at spring. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Stacy. Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reet, aye. Bulk, aye. Orison.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Item six, old business, is an ordinance amending Title VI of the Spencer City Code by adopting a new Title VI, Chapter Four, Section eleven, entitled Urban Chickens. This is the second filing. Motion made by Brian. Second by Tom. Any discussion?
I think last time we were here, I don't know, a couple of us voted in, in favor to see what kind of interest there is out there in the community with people around. And I didn't have a whole lot of, I mean, I had more against than, than were in favor of. And, and a lot of their concerns were, you know, neighborhoods and stuff. And I, and I see both sides of it. But then there were a couple that had concerns, like Donovan was talking about, security bio, you know, with, with the birds and stuff. And, and you know, my brother was an inspector and stuff, and he, you know, he says, he really didn't see a whole lot of, but, but when he started thinking about, you know, you got a very big business out here in Highline, and if they would happen to get it in their, in their bird system out there, you could be shutting down a million dollar, millions of dollar business out there. So, I mean, I, I've listened to both sides. It looks to me like the public is generally not real excited about doing this. So I, I think I'm going to have to vote no with what I've heard from the feedback from citizens.
I want to echo off that just a little bit. First of all, I did reach out to Highline, and I talked to Clayton that works out there. I talked to him two different times. And I would not say, I don't want to speak for him, but I would say there was no panic involved with it. But he, the reason we talked the second time was because he wanted to visit with some of his cohorts in different communities and so on. And the synopsis of it was that they don't feel it's a wise idea for them to support something like this for the same reason, which I understand. I had some people contact me and said, you know, if, if the bird flu gets out and it gets to Highline, you know, there goes a, a big, long-time employer, and they're just going to pack up and move. Well, I think that's a little dramatic, but, but we certainly don't want to cause any hardship on them with this. At the last meeting, I asked for input, and I got quite a bit. And I actually had a talk with Donna Gabel today, who I've talked to a couple of times about this. And my personal feeling is that while I think this would be a neat idea for some kids to get, you know, the four H and people to have the eggs, and I don't think anybody's going to get rich off selling eggs out of four chickens and so on and so forth. I, I do think the, the reaction to it has been a little bit stronger than, than needs to be. I don't think it would cause as much issue as a lot of people that I talked to and heard from seem to think. However, that being said, as I told Donna on the phone today, overwhelming the people I heard from were no. I think it was probably, I probably heard from two, three dozen people, and there was only two people that were for it. And so while it's a little disappointing, on a personal note, I'm elected by those people, and therefore, I don't feel I can go against all of those people that are not in favor of it. At the risk of, of opening a can of chickens, I think if there were, if there were to be more research done on exactly what comes from this in other communities and in more detailed than we had, who knows? But I just, I can't go against all those people that were against it, I'm afraid.
Okay, anyone else? Brian?
I think what I've struggled with while I've looked at this issue is, again, kind of what I touched on the last time, which is what we already have on our books and what we already allow. And I find it challenging to reconcile that we, as a community, are okay with up to thirty pheasants, quail, parakeets, birds of prey without any permits, without an accessory building requirement, without the other language that this proposed ordinance has, but we're not okay with what planning and zoning has spent months on. I also had the opportunity to attend those planning and zoning meetings, and I also heard from community members, and like all of us, we don't discount anything that gets brought to us, or at least I don't. And, and I heard the same concerns I think many of us heard and completely respect them. To that point, that's why I was impressed with planning and zoning. It's because they took the time to try to address those concerns. And as I see it, I'm not here to instill my value system or what I believe is right or wrong onto you. I'm here to try to find a way to be reasonable and compromise and find a path forward that allows for all of us in this community to have the ability to be diverse and have our own thoughts and opinions. That's kind of the five-hundred-foot view of this. When I pull back a little further, I don't want my government being this heavy-handed on my property. And I'm not going to be supportive of an ordinance when we allow for all of this to then turn around and say, well, we're going to allow for this, this, and this, but I'm going to dictate that we're not going to allow for this. Instead, I think what we should try to do is be reasonable. And again, that's what I believe this ordinance is. I could go on, but you know, a lot of the concerns, I, I think, Tom, you make a good point, you know? I think if this were to pass, the likelihood of this becoming a major problem for our community is marginal.
I really do.
I, I think it's marginal. And I don't think any really, candidly, I don't think a lot of people would probably go through this process. You know, if you look at Cedar Rapids, to, to your point about the information, Cedar Rapids has a total of sixty-one permits right now. They're the second-largest community in our state. Sixty-one permits, a hundred and thirty-three residents. You divide that out to us, it works out to be about five permits for this community. I'll also touch on another issue, and that is, just real quick, if we're going to be selective on animals, I just want some numbers to be known that to date, from the start of this year to the end of July, our police department has responded to three hundred and eighteen calls for service related to animals. Last year, they responded to seven hundred and five. Non-responsible owners are non-responsible owners, and we can't do anything about that. I truly believe that for the few who wish to see this go through, I think it's reasonable for us to give it an opportunity. A lot of work has gone into it. A lot of different things would be required to even have it go through. But if it's not meant to be, then what I can tell you is that is this body's decision, and I'll support it however it goes out tonight.
Anyone else? Okay, before I call the vote, one thing I would like to say with regard to this issue is that, just to echo what Councilman Bulk said, I think this, this issue has been thoroughly vetted by P&amp;Z. They spent months on this issue in total transparency. People had an opportunity to weigh in then, and it wasn't until after the first vote that people really took notice of this. And I think that had they looked at all of the research and everything that was done by P&amp;Z, which, and this, this passed, and it was moved on to the council with a unanimous vote, they may have taken it a little different tack, perhaps. But that being said, I, I want to applaud P&amp;Z and the work that they did on this issue and the research that they did on this issue before they sent it to the council. So, thank you to those folks. So at this time, I would ask you to vote by machine.
Excuse me. Nelson, nay. Larson, nay. Wunschel, nay. Hanson, nay. Reet, nay. Bulk, aye. Orison.
Nay.
Okay, does not pass. Item seven, under new business, item A is a motion to approve an agreement for engineering services with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson for the North Y project. And Jim, would you like to speak to that?
Good evening. So what you have before you is a, it's basically our standard engineering agreement for a very large project. We've broken it, we anticipate breaking it into two projects, the underground and the paving. And so this is for the North Y, Dan, what do we call it, the North Y Gateway?
Gateway.
First edition. So it would be the forty four acres that you just purchased or in the process of purchasing. It's sewer, new sanitary sewer, lift station, a force main to serve that area, gravity sewer to serve that area. There will be water mains to serve the east side new lots. It also includes a trunk main. Everything north of Shonham and Lumber is served by one pipe. It runs all the way up past Morton's. It also picks up that industrial park, the old shopper supply area and all of that. And so now before they put any more properties out there, SMU needs to get another loop. So this includes another loop, six, seven thousand foot of pipe to create another loop to beef up that area and provide more water capacity. So that trunk mains included, water mains are included. We've got some money in there for lot grading. There's a bit of a hump there, there's some low areas, we're gonna want to move some dirt as the developer to to do that. And then it also includes storm sewer improvements. Storm sewer improvements within the subdivision. Most of that property drains underneath the highway, under the old railroad, which is now the bike trail, just north of the ready mix. And then that finds its way to the river, it kind of clips the the southeast corner of Vanderhags and and finds its way. Drainage is not good in this area. There's also a drainage ditch to the south, which is just north of the old shopper supply, that ditch that crosses the highway there. That is a drainage district, the drainage district boundary runs right through part of this property. We'll be looking at options there, but but it does not include, you know, a lot of money to do downstream drainage improvements. So all that rolls up into the underground improvement project. And that's just right about a three million dollar project, the way we've got it figured now. And again, that's based on preliminary plans, no field work, no soil borings. So so those numbers will change a little bit, but we're hoping that we have adequate budget in there for that work. And then the second project would be the street paving. We're trying to just make a clean street paving project where we get it all graded out, ready to go, and they come in and pave it. The guys that do just paving, those are the projects they like to see, so we should get competitive bids on that. I think I I touched on a little bit in committee. This may buck up against your timeline a little bit, but most all our projects that we do, we get a better, longer lasting street if we can put the util- underground utilities in in one season and pave it the next season. And for this project, especially pipe delivery and everything else, there's no way you're gonna get it in before this year's, you know, construction season is over. So so you'd be talking about a twenty three for the underground next year and then twenty four in the spring to pave it. I'm just throwing that out there, something to consider. With it set up in two projects, you know, we have that flexibility. And we can talk about that, you know, none of that, you know, has to be decided tonight, I'm just throwing that out there. So those are the, those are the projects. The contract is, it's an hourly contract, I just want to make that clear. You know, you pay for the hours that we work on the project. We're gonna have to work fast to get this, to make that timeline happen. So we won't use up all the hours in the budget unless something goes wrong or we change, you know, somebody changes something down the road. There is a a couple of other things in there. And one of them is just to, that we be reimbursed for the work to date. We've done quite a bit of work to date on the preliminary planning, the cost estimates, trying to do some preliminary sizing of improvements so we can get those cost estimates done. We just want to make sure that there's a look back in this to pick up that time. With an hourly contract, I I don't want to come in and charge you hours that happened before the contract was approved for the work. So that that's kind of what that caveat is. And and Don, I guess, I had kind of, I had anticipated that being subject to that limit and not in addition to that limit, so. That's the way I was looking at that. And then plating and surveying, that typically we do that separate because we don't always know how 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 that's gonna go and when we're gonna be able to set pins. You've set the pins too early, they're in the way for construction. Landscapers love to take them out. Sometimes our underground utilities get a little too close. And the lawn sprinkler guys are the other guys that like to get them here. In this commercial subdivision, I don't anticipate those lots developing that fast. So I don't think those things will be an issue, but we'll want to get it done before we do the grading work. And then finally, talked a little bit about soil borings. You know, we don't do a lot of soil borings, we don't have to. We've we've dug holes just about everywhere in town, except this part of town. I think we know what we're gonna run into. We do have some borings that the potential developer looked at up there. They make sense to me, but the one thing we want to identify is water table because that'll affect our cost. And and it's low wet ground and we've got to go down through it and back up to to connect to the distribution system. So I want to know where that water table is going in. And I want the contractors to know where it is before they bid it. So so you will see some work, soil boring work that's outside of our contract, but we'll work with the city to hire somebody to do that work. And I want to do that work as soon as possible, but I don't want to have to buy corn in order to go do it. So we'll probably wait until we have the crop out to do those borings. As far as timeline, you know, I kind of indicated, our goal would be to try to let the, at least the underground portion in January. Probably with the holidays and everything, it probably ends up that first, really, the letting being like the first meeting in February. I don't want to get too far into the holiday season. Estimators typically are trying to wrap up last year's work and and they want a little breathing room, some of them want to take a little time off. And and we want to make sure that they're they're ready to look at our project. But we also want it to be one of the first projects they look at, so. Starting this early, that shouldn't be a problem. And I think that's all I've got, unless there's. Entertaining questions?
So Jim, on this project, it's all underground. There would be a storm sewer separation out there, that there'd be tile that would come in with that, too?
Yeah, yeah, there is a, so right now it drains basically to the highway ditch and then it crosses under Highway seventy one. You can tell where it is because on the east side, there's a big dead patch of corn where where water sits, you know, and and it's just low ground. That's where that water goes across the highway. So we'll have a collection system. We'll also have, you know, because it's commercial subdivision, your ordinance requires retention and detention of storm water on each lot. And so they're required to detain their water and discharge it at the same rate. We would call that post-development, pre-development rate. Those those two runoff rates need to be the same. And so that that falls on the individual lot developers as they develop that. So technically, the goal is that there won't be any more water coming off that piece of ground than there is now. That that may or may not happen.
Well, if it's a wet already, if it's a wet.
But that's the intent, yeah. Yeah, it, and as you go further south, if you look at the floodplain maps, you know, you get south of our development, a lot of that ground is in the hundred year floodplain. It seems seems, you know, like it's a long ways from the river. And it may be horizontally, but vertically, it's 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 low ground, so.
Okay, anyone else?
We can go further in this later, but maybe clarify a little bit more on the time delay. I'm a little bit more of a foot on the accelerator on this, and I'm not understanding the year delay.
Sure. And 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 it's, and it was more more important maybe in the past. Our equipment is better now, but we're, so we're digging trenches. We're gonna dig, some of those trenches are gonna be fifteen, twenty feet deep. So we're digging a trench this way, then we're gonna come up back and we're gonna pave a pavement this way. What what's gonna happen is this vertical column that we've disturbed is gonna move differently than the undisturbed soil beside it. And and we can work to put that back, you know, as tight as possible, we can do testing. And and like I say, today's equipment makes that better, makes that easier to accomplish as long as the guys running it know what the heck they're doing and do the work. So so one thing that helps us is Mother Nature kind of helps that equalization process in that, at least in the upper frost zone, in the first four feet, three to four feet that freeze. When it goes through that freeze thaw, it kind of modifies that soil structure in that frost zone and that helps make it more uniform. So now our vertical trench isn't as pronounced when it gets to the top, you know, it kind of kind of softens out and so we don't get that that potential settlement. You know, on main line stuff, it's usually not an issue. I anticipate putting our storms or our water main and our sanitary sewer behind the curb so we don't have those trenches, you know, within our horizontal street. But we'll always have crossings in some of those trenches. And it's some of those trenches that 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 kind of can be a problem. But that that's a, that's probably the biggest reason. The other is kind of a practical thing. You're gonna push this contract, you know, if if you want to do an accelerated project and you want to have work done by a certain date, you're gonna have to pay extra to do that. You know, you're gonna have to pay probably some kind of incentive to put this project in front of other projects. May, you know, maybe, maybe not, I mean, that's the sure way to get it done. The longer the window of of time to do that work that we can give within the construction, you know, if we can give them the whole construction season, say, hey, you know, but we don't want them out there, you know, we don't want them out there dragging it out. Give them working, number of calendar working days, you know, forty five days, sixty days, whatever, within that window, that usually gives us better pricing. If that window pushes, you know, into October and you turn it over to your paver, and you'll see that now. It's dry out there now, now it seems like, boy, you could do anything out there in the dirt now. Well, if it starts raining in three weeks, you know, the days get shorter, ground doesn't dry up, it gets harder to get that that pavement work done, you know, in the mud as opposed to the dry dirt. Now, we're gonna put in subdrains, so subdrain each tile in the pavement. We're gonna use a granular subbase, so so another layer underneath that pavement, and we're gonna use an eight inch pavement. So those things are gonna help, all of those things. But I I'm just throwing it out there. Nobody works harder than Mother Nature when it comes to to correcting soils. And so if we can take advantage of it, it's to your advantage long term. If we if we can't and want to push forward, we can do that, too. And we'll take, like I say, all those other steps. So that that's why I just throw it out there. It's it's definitely not a, you know, must do. We're not gonna jump up and down and say, geez, you guys blew it if you don't do this. Just throw it out there to keep in mind. Because I do know that that there is, you know, there is political pressure to move this project, you know, at at a higher pace. One other thing that's kind of bucking back against that would be the DOT and, you know, and and work on that highway. And I've talked to, you know, the the convenience store people about that. They've had conversations with the DOT. They're kind of waiting for all this stuff to mesh together. I think we're meeting with the DOT the end of the week. We'll know more after that meeting. The the having some kind of major modification five years out, that's what's giving guys cold feet up there. So the sooner we can get them nailed down in what they're gonna do and how that's gonna affect people that move into this development, the better off we're gonna be. The other thing that he talked about today was, on one of our plans, we had shown moving Fortieth Street further north. So just to the, just to the north side of the old Rentall Building. That, there's a crossover there, and by crossover, it's the connection between the northbound, southbound lane, there's a crossover this way. There, that intersection almost lines up with that, we'll have to modify that a little bit. But that may become our east west street. Right now, we've got it about three lots south, that's the way the lot, the land is platted. And that's kind of what's shown on the drawings that were included with the contract. I want to make sure the DOT is on board with us there, gonna let us put that that crossover. And then there's some things, if that happens, that want to talk about on on the west side to maybe tie into that. But if all that falls together, you know, we're in good shape. I'm just a little worried about the DOT, you know, not being able to move as fast as you guys want to move. And we kind of have to know where that street's gonna be, well, at least before we pave it. But we can get our underground going and and we will. It's a long answer, isn't it, Brian?
Anyone else? Thanks, Jim.
Well, and I just like say, we're we're excited about it, you know, big, big open field development projects are what engineers dream about, and we just don't get to do too many of them around here, so we appreciate it.
So at this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve that agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Kate Cruz and Nelson.
Motion made by Ron.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Thank you, Bill. Motion carries. Okay. Item B under new business is to review bids received for the twenty twenty two Spencer Grand Avenue traffic signal upgrade. And Zach Parsons from Bolton and Mink is here with us tonight to talk about the the project and the bids that were received.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I kind of want to go over some of the brief background of Grand Avenue. Project came about, so it's from H Street, the first streets. The whole intent here is to kind of replace some of the controllers and cabinets that are along the corridor to kind of improve efficiency of traffic and operations along for northbound and southbound traffic. So we came in and worked with the city to help replace some of these controllers. We got some ICAP funding and Ustep funding from the DOT to help do this, to help reduce emissions. Part of the project, we're working on replacing the controllers, like I mentioned. We're adding in some detection for vehicles and detection for pedestrians as well. The intent here is that there may not always be a vehicle on a side street that would need a green time, so detection from cameras would help allow for more green time along Grand Avenue here. So it's a fully actuated system, relies mostly on the detection here to improve those, the timings. Additionally, there is gonna be some new push buttons and some new countdown ped timer, or countdown ped timers for pedestrians here as well. Currently, right now, there's, obviously, there's an emphasis on pedestrian travels. So when we have peds traveling up and down the corridor, they're allowed to push the button, receive a time to be able to cross, and the signal will allow them to do that. So going into the bids, we did have an engineer's estimate of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of that was supposed to be covered by ICAP funding. The remainder of that, the hundred and forty one thousand, was to be covered from Ustep funding from the DOT. Ustep funding covers the fifty five percent of the total and the city covers the remainder of the forty five percent. Bids came in a little bit higher. Our lowest bid was at five hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. So we did go back to the DOT and asked them for additional funding to help cover some of these costs. The DOT was willing to participate and offer more money here. The the downside here is that the city is still responsible for forty five percent of those additional costs for that. Some of the reasoning for some of these costs, I would say, is that with with our chip shortages right now and a lot of, you know, post pandemic type of costs, they've gone up quite a bit with inflation right now at the moment. So we're still trying to catch up with that industry wide. And so that's not something that we could really predict very well two, three years ago when we were in the design process of this. So that would be why some of the the costs here are a little bit higher. But as I mentioned, we worked with the DOT to get some additional funds here to help pay for that. And I do want to kind of push that this is a good idea to kind of move forward with. I mean, this, the the controllers that we have out here on Grand Avenue right now are pretty old. It's it's, we're getting to the point where some technology may not be able to mesh with it and be able to talk. So there's a point where you can't kick that can down the road any further and you have to make that upgrade. And so I think this is a great idea for the city to do, and I think you're gonna see a lot of great traffic improvements from it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Zach at this time?
No, I I do understand that the prices on all this stuff is going up. I mean, if we don't do it now and we don't get the Ustep grant next time, we'd have to be paying for the whole thing. And so I, eventually, it's gonna have to be done, so. I I see we have an expert here with the traffic signals. Is there, and and you're working with with them on on this system and everything? And and they're comfortable with this new pri- our system and?
Yep, yep. I walked the corridor with Alan and about.
Yep, yep. I walked the quarter with Alan and about-
About a year ago now.
Uh, to kind of address some of the issues. So um, they've, they've been helping hands with that kind of assist any needs that we have.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, Zach. So at this time, we have uh two possible uh actions. We can either table the action on the bids or we can, uh, I'll take a, a motion to accept the, award the contract for the 2022 Grand Ave- Grand Avenue traffic signal upgrade. Uh, it's KNW Electric, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion made by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion?
Uh, Brian, additional funding that we're gonna be needing for this, since the city's paying a little more share than what we anticipated, do you see an issue with-
No.
-getting the extra funding?
Nope. We, we would, I believe I commented we would take it out of capital improvement reserves. So um, we would have the additional funding. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wonchel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye. Orison?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Item eight, department head reports. Don't think we have a planning department head yet, so uh there will be no report there. Uh, library, Sarah Beth.
Good evening, everyone. Um, first, I just wanna give a shout out to the Spencer Reads Committee. We had our kickoff Together We Read um event this morning at ten AM where we encouraged everybody in the community to stop what they were doing and read for fifteen minutes and then post a picture on um social media with the hashtag Spencer Reads. So it was tons of fun to see all the businesses that um participated. And if, if you didn't yet, you know, it's okay that it's not ten AM. Do it anytime. Um, so that's going well. Uh, and then uh next month, we'll, the committee will be working on getting some baskets of books to um various businesses around town. So if you have some gently used children's books, you may bring them to the library. We're collecting them there um to distribute. As far as the library goes, we did have um our testing and balancing got done last week. So now we're just waiting for the report, report from TOFER um before the retro commissioning with Woodman Controls. So um, other projects we are working on, um, we're going to have an automatic push button door installed in one of our restrooms, the family restroom um for um more accessibility. It was, we have a patron that has to ask for help to open the bathroom door. So for their sake, we're gonna put this in. Um, and then we just kind of brought back up this morning having the flagpole installed. So we'll get that taken care of. Um, the library board meeting is this Thursday evening, September eighth. Uh, we're moving the meeting time back to six-thirty now. So um, cause we had a conflict with one of our board members. So that should work out for the rest of the school year at least. Um, and otherwise, we are looking ahead to, October is our um annual Iowa Library Association Conference and five staff are planning on attending various portions of that. So looking forward to it.
Okay. Any questions for Sarah Beth? Thank you much. Fire Chief Conian.
Good evening, Mayor, manager, council. Your Spencer Fire Department answered over seventy-three calls of service uh this past August, including thirty-five uh calls for EMS, which included a lot of difficulty breathing calls as well as fall victims. We're still seeing fall victims, uh seizures, diabetic reactions and such. We answered thirteen calls for fires, including malfunctioning of detectors, uh odors in houses, CO detectors that are still going off, as well as an oven fire, as well as a couple of illegal burns by burning trash and burning materials that shouldn't be burned on properties in Spencer. Um, our ambulance one oh four that resides inside uh went for uh some weakness calls, allergic reactions, as well as a couple of chest pain calls, as well as overdoses. Uh, a couple of special events that we had, got able to do this year or this month was uh uh going ahead and welcoming children back to school as uh from grade schools as well as high schools, as well as a touch a truck event. Uh, touch a truck event is uh pretty special because we were introduced to this by Terry Peterson and for a few of the members of council that do know Terry Peterson as a longtime Kiwanis member. Um, it's truly an honor to uh help represent and carry uh his desires forward. Lastly, our training this month, our, this past August, uh concentrated on the uh Clay County Fairground area. A couple of members being Steve Grimias as well as Jacob Franker, uh going, went ahead and programmed uh and calibrated some of the hydrants that are in the area. And uh we are utilizing uh that training for uh gallons per minute flow if we're responding to certain areas, as well as doing some EMS training on uh how to remove, if we had to remove a patron from uh the grandstands, how we could do that more efficiently. And these are a few of the things that uh your fire department was involved with this past August. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Police, Chief Warburton.
Good evening. Uh, the speech, Spencer Police Department responded to nine hundred and thirty-five calls for service the month of August and we performed thirty-five arrests. Um, this month, we had a couple of training days that's to be noted. August fifteenth was the uh school safety and security drill that was formed at Spencer High School. Uh, we had nearly fifty-eight participants in that drill. Uh, members from the Spencer Fire Department, emergency management, Spencer Hospital, uh Clay County Sheriff's Office, um and Spencer School Administration, along with the police department. So we had a good turnout there. Uh, the training was followed up with a critique meeting, um, which resulted in probably uh an expectation of, of future trainings at different schools uh in the coming months. Uh, August seventeenth, uh emergency management and I did some uh intruder training with the Spencer Hospital pharmacy staff, uh with future trainings expected uh to be scheduled uh throughout the hospital. Uh, this month, department-wide training was performed with uh resilient, resiliency training uh put on by the First Responder Foundation, along with TASER uh recertifications and firearms qualifications. Uh, the Clay County Communications Center liked to welcome Amanda Beggs uh to the uh department. Uh, she's been hired as the new dispatcher for us. So we are up to full staff uh at this point. Um, with her training to conclude probably mid-December, when that's over with, at which time we'll be expecting another opening at that time for our retirement. So this isn't gonna last long. So um, and lastly, on the consent agenda this night, you guys touched on, I just wanted to remind the general public that homecoming is September twenty-third. With that is the homecoming parade. So Tenth Avenue East gets closed down that day uh from uh approximately one fifteen in the afternoon to two-thirty that day, from Seventeenth Street uh to Third Street on Tenth Avenue East again. So all the, the Spencer School um, Spencer Schools has contacted, there's, the school board has contacted all of the uh businesses in that area that would be affected by this. And so we expect very uh minimal uh issues with that uh parade. Any questions, Paul?
Any questions for Chief? Um, before you go, Chief, I just have a comment. And uh, uh to both you and Chief Conian, um, I was able to take part in the debriefing with the active shooter drill. And I was really impressed with the uh, the way that that whole debriefing was handled. And I, I, I was impressed with the various entities. Uh, our police, uh, the deputies uh through the Sheriff's Department, our fire department, uh, the emergency responders from Clay County Emergency Relief, the hospital, the school, everybody working together. And I think that the public needs to know that out of that debriefing, I think, uh, I think it was you or perhaps Eric Tigas who talked about, what are the two big takeaways from this? And, and I thought that the two big takeaways for me, what, what everybody talked about was number one, the teamwork that, that was shown by everybody in that particular drill. And the other thing was the competency that everybody showed. Everybody was, was very congratulatory of everybody else, that they felt like, okay, if, if I'm a police officer, I, I trust the firefighters who are working side by side, that they had competency. So, so I, I was really impressed with that and I think that uh i- it's a good starting point. And uh, as you indicated, I think we're going to make um uh further drills and we've got, we've got farther to go uh in the process.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot to wrangle when you get all these agencies in there and, and fifty-eight different participants and that. And when you came out and when trust is the biggest, you know, it was just a win for everybody. Just a win for everybody.
Yeah. So thank you on behalf of the community.
Thank you.
Chief, uh, just real briefly, at the last meeting, we were, yeah, uh, Bill Baumgartner gave a, a presentation about the mental health coordinator and, and we still have some discussions to take place amongst ourselves. But could you just kinda touch on that briefly? He had mentioned you and your support of it and-
Yeah, so I sit on that board and that, on that uh board uh for that. And what this person is gonna do is basically look at trying to help all of the providers and get it, get a, um, a really good grasp on the resources that's available and help people in their time and need to get the, the fastest resources possible. And so that's a big job, wrangling several different agencies and regions right here. And so, uh, but focusing on, on Spencer and Clay County. So um, I think it's a big part for the city to, to participate in. Um, and I definitely, um, they have that position hired. And so that person's gonna start here in the next couple of weeks. And so um, it's, it's gonna be good for the city of Spencer.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Public Works, Mark.
Good evening. Um, I'm just gonna shorten it up a little bit since we're running a little long. But one of the things I wanted to mention was uh city staff worked together to uh accomplish most of the tree trimming in the central business district. Uh, worked with Campbell's Tree Service, along with the park divi- uh, park department and the street division to try to make that a little more of a smoother, faster, more efficient operation. One of the things I wanted to note is we've been trying really hard to have that on social media. Uh, Brian does a nice job getting those type of notifications on, on our webpage. Uh, so if, if you have a chance, maybe uh give the, give the page a like, uh, cause that's what we're trying to use that as uh information on all of these projects, which segues right into the next project, which is tonight. Um, at, the sewer on Grand Avenue from the bridge going north, uh, just past H Street is an old hand-laid uh tile sewer. And it's been a long time since we've been able to do some thorough maintenance on that. So the street division is coming in tonight at midnight and will be working two different nights, uh, till seven AM when we believe the traffic picks up. And we'll try to clean that extensively, which hasn't been done in many years. And then also, that's part of a segue uh to televise that and try to get a feel for what the condition of that sewer is, as we enter into our capital improvement planning, which is next month. So also, street division worked on the fair preparation. It goes pretty smooth. Um, we've, we've done a, quite, done it a long time and, and uh pretty efficient at it. But keep in mind that the speed limit does change on West Eighteenth Street, along with the traffic lights uh that are up for the pedestrian crossing and, you know, the, there're no parking signs that take a fair amount of maintenance to keep those, keep those rolling through the, through the week. Also, uh, keep in mind that the school zone parking has changed. So we put up school zone parking uh changes for the school season. That has been completed, along with the uh crosswalk and the painting. So other than that, I thought I'd keep it short. So-
Very good.
If we don't ask any questions, we're good.
Yeah.
Are you thinking of one, Donovan?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
He's thinking, buddy.
Okay. Uh, since we still do not have a park and rec director, but uh that may change soon, um, we'll go to golf course, Brian.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, I'll go quickly as well. Um, I'm just gonna touch on a few things and I'll send out an email tomorrow for everyone. Uh, we have a golf board meeting tomorrow evening, so I'm gonna get a little bit more in detail with some of these topics, but I'll include you all in an email. For the citizens out there, they can log onto our website and look at our blog if they want to read a little bit more about some of these. Um, first off, we're doing our season pass special right now for folks to join at the muni to pay half now and half in the spring. And a new addition to that is gonna be the online banking payment. So folks can start um doing a bank draft payment right now. They'll set it up over ten payments, which will uh break down the, the fees for them, make it a little bit more affordable for folks to play at the muni for the rest of the season and next year. Um, our irrigation system, we've been dealing with a lot of issues with that this year. Um, hasn't been a lot of fun with the, with the high winds and the heat earlier in the year and continuing with heat again. We've had uh irrigation heads not working properly, issues with diaphragms, been through thirty-some stations in the last couple of weeks trying to make some repairs in those. Um, new irrigation heads were ordered a day for some areas. Um, then we've been experiencing issues with our well lately. Our well is a, our backup water source for our irrigation pond. Our main source is the county tile that feeds into the pond from over a thousand farm acres. And uh I had Milford Well on site today to do just a little bit of uh pre-planning with what we're dealing with. Um, not totally sure, but it appears that we have an issue with the casing that's going down into the well. It's probably a hundred and fifty feet down. Um, we're gonna have to remove all the casing and pull the pump up to see what we're dealing with. Um, so our pump right now is operating at about twenty percent of what it should be. So it's, if the irrigation system normally were to run overnight with the entire golf course that's irrigated being watered, it would take about the same amount of time with our pump to fill the, to replace what we're taking out each night. Right now, it takes me about five days out of the well to replace what I put irrigate on the entire golf course over one night. So um, I'm gonna start limiting it back, the irrigation that we put on the fairways and some of those other areas and just totally concentrate on our greens and, and our tea areas, since those are the most important playing area of the golf course. So I'm just gonna try to do as much education as I can to the public to let them know what we're dealing with and uh still try to do the best we can moving forward with that. Um, another serious area that we've been dealing with here in the last three, four weeks, which has picked up quite a bit is um, and unfortunately, it seems to be showing up in the high school age of kids. Out on the golf course, a lot of horse play, um, damaging rental carts, driving them improperly. Uh, they're golf carts, not bumper cars. Um, poor course etiquette, uh abuse to the grounds. I spoke with Chief Warburton a little bit to, to try to move forward with this. Um, I have been able to talk to some parents of kids that, that we've dealt with. Um, another issue that, along with them is having their friends sneak onto the golf course, not registering, not paying. So we're trying to crack down on that. And moving forward, we're gonna have zero tolerance with any of it from anyone. So if you get a phone call and your kid's involved, I'd be happy to share a little bit more information with you. Um, and finally, with the EAB coming into, into Spencer and the plan that we're doing, um, I've ordered the instruments and the materials to start treating some of the trees that are on the golf course for that. It'll be uh, each treatment will last for two years and we'll try to space it out over periods of time and focus on some of the more importantized trees that we have at the golf course. So I think that's all I got.
I have one thing for Brian and uh it's in the other duties as assigned category. And uh, can, can you explain how you've become a reptile handler?
That was not by choice.
It's kind of an interesting story, though.
Well, on last Wednesday, I was working in the clubhouse and somebody came in with a picture on their phone of an iguana on our ninth fairway. And I kinda laughed it off and, and then about fifteen minutes later, somebody else came in the clubhouse and had a picture of an iguana on the golf course. And then Sunday night, I got a phone call from staff with a picture of an iguana in the tree on number nine. So it sparked a lot of concern with people and we're worried about the welfare of the iguana. So I went out before sunlight Monday morning and um thankfully, it was a little chilly and he very graciously just fell off the branch into a box. Didn't put up a fight. And uh, he's been relocated to a um reptile rehab facility in our area.
Cool. Thank you for, for your service.
That was one thing I never thought I would do-
No, no.
-with my career.
Not, not, not in Iowa.
Not, no.
Not in Iowa.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure he didn't have anything-
No.
-near that. So, okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Brian?
Oh.
So-
Just got one question.
Yeah.
Back to the, back to the pump and the casing, how long's that been in service?
Since nineteen ninety-nine, so it's been twenty-three years. What we're guessing is that there's probably a hole that's appeared down below. Originally, when I turned the pumps on, it's immediately, the water's immediately coming out and transferring into the pond. Right now, it's taken about a thirty-second delay for the water to get up to the surface. So everything's speculation, and we're going to wait here a little bit, because even if it's operating at twenty percent, it's better than zero. So we're going to try to get to the point where the irrigation isn't, isn't as crucial, and then we'll start addressing that.
Has that been hit by lightning, do you know of?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Brian, on the, on the, the watering system in its entirety, when you talk about new heads, new diaphragms, I assume it's just from debris in the water coming from a sand?
Some of it, we get debris that gets into the, into the lines where it could come in through a, our irrigation system's a little bit different than most. Ours is a, a block system, so there's a valve, and then there's a lateral line coming off the main line. So it's never under pressure unless it's actually operating. Most systems are just valve and heads, so everything's one hundred percent under pressure all the time. And some of those lateral lines are in valve boxes, and so when they come through the winter with the frost going up and down, sometimes we get a crack in those. So then when the lateral line station comes on, it's pushing water down into the ground, and sometimes the debris gets up and gets pulled into that line and then gets caught into the, into the sprinkler heads, and so then they don't rotate, they just stay still. And we've been addressing the repairs of some of those, but you don't, you don't find them until a head's not working.
How old is the system out there?
It's twenty-three years.
Any other questions for Brian before we let him go? Okay, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, city attorneys report, Don?
Thank you, Mayor. In August, there was a little above-average demand for legal services, about thirty-eight hours. Half of that, though, was sort of in the first half of the month, dealing with the mobile home park issues. That was certainly the primary activity of the month. Some other things were property purchase that you're working on, as well as a property sale, wrapping up things with the hospital, street vacations, and on some personnel issues. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Don. Human Resources, Jessica.
Good evening. Are you all awake? Do we need to do an HR activity? No? Okay. In the month of August, some things I've been working on with city staff include forever recruiting for open positions that I do think are going very well. We have two department head positions open. Parks and Rec Director interviews will be this Thursday. The Planning Director interviews will be Thursday, September twenty-second. And another open position that's been open for a while is a seasonal part-time landfill grounds maintenance position, and this is in our Gretnge location. So if anybody's interested, please visit our company careers page and let me know. Been working a little bit with the Volunteer Firefighter Association on some processes, and I just want to say I appreciate everybody that's worked with me on that process. It's been going very well. And the Safety Committee met, again, as they do every month. It's comprised of a member from each of the departments across the city, and we go over any issues that we can handle ahead of time to prevent injuries. And so we're happy to announce that we are at two-hundred-and-thirty-six days with no lost days due to injury. So that's a pretty good number, and we're going to keep that up. Lots of kudos to every department, because everyone needs to do their part so that we can keep that count going. I also completed the work comp audit and set up some electronic tracking for our safety training that Michael Rayner does through Shield. And we had an onsite walkthrough visit by our work comp insurance, IMWCA. They visited the transfer station, street department, and parks department. Another round of kudos out to those staff, because the report back didn't have any issues to tend to. It went really well, and they were impressed with our facilities and our processes, which is good, because that helps our, our numbers and our financial department. Lastly, I've completed the train, the trainer leadership course that was part of the initiative on the staff development. There was a team that Bill Orson was on that was working on just building the leadership for the future among the city organization. So next step on that is this fall and winter, I'll be taking all of the city staff through a course that I've, I'll be building off of that. Any questions?
Any questions for Jessica? Thank you very much.
All right, yeah.
Okay, item nine, Engineers Report, Jim.
Ready for more?
Why not?
Just quick update on a couple of projects. The intermediate cover project over the landfill, we're done moving dirt, and they seeded that last week, so that project is done. And some of the other seeding, MLS Landscape was in, they, they did the Leach Park boat ramp, the PD parking lot, and the Fourth Street overlay project this week, so, or last week. So most of that's all been seeded, so we're in pretty good shape. We're right in the middle of the seeding period. Couple of projects starting. One is the wastewater treatment driveway replacement. The lost construction moved in today and started with pavement removal. It'll probably take them most of this week to do the removals and hopefully get it paved next week. Of course, and then the other project that started is the overlay project, and that's up on St. Luke's Hill, most of the streets up there on St. Luke's Hill, overlay. I think the subcontractor's in there patching it this week, so that's what's going on up there, and then they'll start overlay following that, unless it starts raining. And that's all I have, and that's just questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. City Managers Report, Dan.
I've got a few things. On the update on the trailer park as of last Friday, power had been restored to six units, and all six of those have been inspected due to substandard housing inspections, and they've got, some of them have a little bit of work to do, but they're all making progress. They had two inspections scheduled today. I didn't get a chance to touch base with them to see how those went, but we're plugging along, moving forward and towards getting all the ones that are able to get hooked up hooked up, so that's moving forward. I'll mention again, we've been getting some calls about odors on the west side of town. That, that plan is, working with staff, going to spend some, quite a bit of money to try to fix that problem. They're trying to be good neighbors. It's going to take some time, though, so we just have to bear with them until they get that done. Staff is in very regular communication with them, so we'll hold them accountable, but I don't see that being a problem. It's just going to have to be patient. It's going to take some time for them to get it done. It's kind of a big project. And lastly, I won't be at the next meeting. I'll be in Columbus, Ohio with the ICMA International City Managers Conference, so might terribly empty in two weeks.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, thank you, Dan. Under the Mayor's Report, the first item is a motion to approve Diana Coppin to the Historic Preservation Commission to replace Kara Albert, who's, and the term will expire June thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill. Motion carries. Okay, secondly, I hope everyone enjoyed a nice Labor Day weekend, and just want everyone to know that we didn't always have Labor Day weekend. And it wasn't until eighteen ninety-four that President Cleveland and Congress proclaimed a day to honor Americans, American workers and their contribution to freedom and economic prosperity. And prior to eighteen ninety-four, a few states, about, well, almost half the states, twenty-two states, did have honor Labor Day and, and gave people a day off if they could. But it wasn't until eighteen ninety-four that we've celebrated Labor Day. Another thing I'd like to mention is the Spencer Reads program that Sarah Beth mentioned. I was honored to take part in that today, and it's also National Read a Book Day, so as she said, you didn't have to do it necessarily at ten o'clock in the morning. There's still time tonight if we ever conclude the meeting. And the, and also, I think that this new initiative that the school has going with Brooke Schuler and Amy Simpson with regard to Spencer Reads is, is a very worthy one. They were on the Mayor's Update about a week ago, and they talked about what their goal is, and their goal is to have eighty-five percent of third graders reading at proficiency. And I think after we've come out of this COVID time, it's, it's time to move reading along, and we as adults can model that for our kids and our grandkids. So very worthwhile initiative. And fourth, couple of things with regard to a couple nonprofits here in town. Couple of great exhibits going on right now. One at the Heritage Center, Diana Coppin, who we just approved as a new member of the, of the Historical Preservation Commission, she and her sister wrote a book with regard to, about her aunt, who was a civil rights worker in the South during the civil rights era in the sixties, and actually was a teacher in some of the Freedom Schools. And she has just a trove, just an absolute treasure trove of material down there from that, that particular era, and I would urge everybody to go and take a look at it. And then Arts on Grand also has a new exhibit. So it's a multi-dimensional multimedia exhibit, and I think you'll find it fascinating. I, I took a look at it this afternoon, and it was just amazing. And then lastly, it's been alluded to a couple of times tonight that the Clay County Fair is upon us, and I just want to thank Jeremy Parsons and his staff. But I also want to thank the city employees for all that they do and all of the volunteers within our community who make this. Everybody pulling together makes this the world's greatest county fair. And that's all I've got. I tried to keep it short, Donovan. Okay, item twelve, Counseling Committee Reports.
Was that earlier? In two weeks, on the nineteenth, we have our regular city council meeting, and then we have two facility tours, and each night they'll be going to different places, so that would, there is some confusion there at first. But on the twenty-sixth, we're going to visit the police department, Stolly Park and Solid Waste, and on the tenth of, of next month, there'll be the Central Garage, East Leach, and the library. So two separate ones, come to whichever ones you can, or both, or whatever, but this should be enlightening, and we'll get, so you can see these before we get the facility plan is due about the time the second tour is, so you'll get an idea of what they're talking about when they give that report.
Okay, item thirteen, I'd entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. Motion made by Bill. Second by Brian. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item fourteen, other business opportunity to address the council. Seeing no one come forward, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion? Or Tracy? I guess it's Tracy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Bill.